Okay, welcome everyone. Today is Monday, August 5th, 2024. This is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kurzak, can you please call this meeting to order?
Yes, this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public on 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting is being provided to the toll has been provided to the Coast and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and post on municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on east and west sides of the council chambers as well as the back of the building. I will ask anybody with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of the meeting. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV for your viewing pleasure in the future. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation without, invisible, and ready for justice.
I will now take roll call. James Banano, Councilwoman Clayton, Eric Gallo, Jim Henry is absent, Jeremy Hoffman, Mayor Moore, Daniel Shinameo, Jen Souter, Vice Chair Gunnin, Chairwoman Barbara Kurzak.
Here.
Okay, the first item up on the agenda is the Asbury Park Beach Club Resolution. Anybody have any, I know that was circulated, anybody have any concerns? All right, can I get a motion to, a motion to pass this resolution?
Saluted.
I'll second. Sorry guys, I had my computer worked on today, so apologies.
You want me to call it?
Do you have it in front of you?
Sure.
Sorry.
Okay, Barbara Kurzak?
Yes.
Michael Gunnin?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Eric Gallo?
Yes.
James Banano?
Yes.
And Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Okay, next resolution is 1001 First Avenue Redevelopment Plan Amendment Review and Recommendation. I believe that there was some last minute
Yes.
...discussion about this. Jack, you want us to?
Yeah, what I did was I took into consideration comments received from everyone that sent them this afternoon, and what I did was I combined comments made by Eric with Jennifer's comments and a couple of comments I had received earlier from James and Michael Gunnin, and put them in there. Okay, the only one that I didn't put in was the reference about the additional ingress egress on Langford Street because I had received one member who said yes, that was part of it, and I had two members who said no. So that's up to the board to decide. But I said, well, I got two saying that that's not to be included, one that says that it should be, so it's up to you to decide.
Do we know, Mike, I think that you were on this one, do you recall?
Yeah, I looked at my notes, and I do remember we talked a lot about traffic and neighborhood impact of traffic and parking. And what I recall and what I have written down is that we had recommended a full traffic parking impact study, you know, that we were open to the possibility of entrances on other streets, but I don't think we specifically recommended that the entrance should move.
So I will amend my comment that I wrote in our internal emails, which was to say that we recommended moving. I think better language would be that we would be, we would recommend being open to any frontage, or frontages including Langford to be considered based on a traffic study that includes analysis of the likely impacts and traffic motions.
I have it in there, basically what you just said.
Yeah, so I think when I wrote my, you know, shot off my emailing, I made it sound like the board was recommending Langford. And I think what the board is recommending is being open to the possibility of Langford.
Yeah, and what I did was I combined the, where we had right of way, I took that and I made a traffic stormwater management, and I took your comment about stormwater and all that, and put it all under one.
Okay.
So everything that was in there, except for that one phrase that was recommended by everyone, is there.
Yeah, I think as long as it conveys that other options besides first should be considered based on data.
For what purpose?
For vehicle ingress and egress.
No, that's not in there. I took that out because that was specifically not what the board had said.
So I believe that the board said we should consider, we should at least consider Langford as an option.
No, that's not what James said.
Well, my problem was that the way we had written written, it said the board recommends Langford. I said, no, we didn't recommend Langford.
Correct.
And Eric's, and Eric's saying, and what Mike said also was, we talked a lot about a traffic study and evaluating the effects on the area, and that the board would recommend a review of the access egress location based on that study, and all three sides would be available for discussion.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so let me add something to that effect. Give me that language again, as well as?
Consideration.
In terms of the traffic study?
Oh, a traffic study that includes?
All possibilities.
Of ingress and egress?
The traffic study should include?
Well, give me the phraseology specifically relating to Langford, what you were looking over at the question.
That, you know, all, all frontages should be considered for vehicle ingress and egress.
Okay.
Is that okay with everyone that was present at the meeting?
Yes.
That's what you called?
With respect to the traffic study, I think we were specific that it's not just a traffic count, that it is, you know, an impact analysis that estimates the new traffic.
Yeah, that's what it says.
That's what it says.
Traffic parking impact analysis.
So I just added it to after that impact analysis sentence. Additionally, the board recommends that the plan should include traffic common measures as well as all frontages being considered for ingress and egress purposes.
Yeah.
And then it just goes on to read whatever was there to improve fentanyl and safety and so on. So that would be the revision.
I have one more thing, Jack. In the, I think in the thinking of the different versions, there was like one bit, under Architecture 3, I made those changes and you incorporated it, but I think when it merged, that there's still that leftover fragment where it says, is only minimally, that portion.
Minimally, minimally interactive with the surrounding neighborhood at street level.
Right, but that can come out now because it's not a full sentence. Because the first part, I think it just didn't get cut out in the last revision, because it's saying does not involve interaction with the neighborhood while the adjacent neighborhood character fosters the interaction at street level, period. And you don't need that.
Last phrase?
You don't need that, is only minimally.
Okay, so I'll strike that.
Jenna, all your comments in here, because didn't you have something under Architecture about, you know, comprehensive landscape plan that includes green infrastructure?
I did, and the green infrastructure didn't make it into the last version, but I didn't know if that was intentional. The other language?
No, I put in, I took what you had and what you sent over to me, and I put it in.
I just, I have.
Green infrastructure wasn't in that resolution you sent over.
It is.
It is?
Yeah. There was a version with a bunch of red.
It's red and blue, so that I.
Yeah, okay.
It's just the one word in between, street furniture, comma, green infrastructure, comma, like.
Ah, okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay. But otherwise, the other reasons that you might, that you don't see every word is because it's sort of condensed, but it's all in there now.
Okay.
Okay, I'll put in green infrastructure.
Thank you.
Okay, got it?
Okay. All right, can I get a motion to approve that resolution based on those changes that we just discussed?
Second.
You want me to call?
Okay, Eric Gallo?
Yes.
James Banano?
Yes.
Jennifer Souter?
Yes.
Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jeremy Hoffman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gunnin?
Yes.
All right. All right, next item up for consideration is 1201 Memorial Avenue Redevelopment Plan.
So I will be recusing myself from all further discussions about 1201 Memorial, only 1201 Memorial.
All right.
Okay, Madam Chairwoman, the originator of the redevelopment plan notice, this in accordance with directives from the Mayor and Council. I reviewed the notices, they're in proper form. Everyone within 200 feet, Asbury Park Press and the like, were all properly notified at least 10 days prior to tonight's meeting.
Okay, so we can get started?
Okay. Hello, everybody. Once again, my name's Beth McManus. I'm the city's city planner that authored the redevelopment plan.
Please raise your right hand and solemnly swear or affirm the testimony about giving this matter with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your affiliation with the city.
Sure. My name's Elizabeth, or Beth McManus, M-C-M-A-N-U-S, and I'm a principal at Kyle McManus. We are the city's city planner serving for redevelopment projects, including this one.
You're good to go.
Okay. So folks, what we have before you this evening is, I would say, a very simple and straightforward amendment to the 1201 redevelopment plan. That is, of course, the redevelopment plan that was adopted by the council not too long ago on June 26th of this year that provides for the redevelopment of the 1201 memorial site. Throughout that process, in part because of comments from the planning board, it became clear that there were concerns about the location of access to the site. As you may recall, the adopted redevelopment plan requires compliance with the, with a handful of items, but one of those is the site concept plan that is included in the, towards the end of the redevelopment plan. Shown on that site concept plan is, of course, access, two-way access to Fourth Avenue. And so what this redevelopment plan amendment does in, in two places, although one of them is simply of reference to the other, but it provides additional discretion to the planning board. And it does so by permits planning board discretion as to the location of the Fourth Avenue access. It also permits discretion as to whether or not there should be a Fifth Avenue access, as well as if yes, whether it should be one or two-way for vehicles, and if yes, what that location should be. And so that, those, I would say, two categories of additional discretion, the location of the Fourth Avenue access, and if in the, the details of the Fifth Avenue access are the totality of this redevelopment plan amendment. You can find that language under Section F, Parking and Circulation, and then the reference that I had cited earlier, just two minutes earlier, you can find that in Section G, under Architectural Design. And the Architectural Design reference is simply there to make clear that the building design can change as needed to accommodate the Fifth Avenue access if that's what the planning board deems as appropriate during the site plan application. And so that is the totality of the amendments, and of course, the board's role this evening is to, similar to your other review of the full redevelopment plan, is master plan consistency as well as any other comments that the board might like to make. I, I would personally view master plan consistency being unchanged from the full redevelopment plan, but I'll of course defer to the board and, and of course, I'm happy to hear any comments and answer any questions the board may have.
If I may, we should enter into, as an exhibit, the resolution that refers the matter over to us, along with the suggested amendments that we're reviewing, make that C1 in today's date.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
Okay. Something concerns me is, but there were a couple of things there that I think are a little bit more than I understood that we had to determine.
Okay.
But it's up to, if this is what the council is asking for, I did not, I did not see that in here.
Okay.
Let me, let me be specific.
Sure.
I thought that tonight we were going to be taking a look at Fourth Avenue, which was already there, and, and the question and the ask was really, could there or should there be a Fifth Avenue egress? Okay? That's, and I don't know if anybody else understood it as anything different, but from what I'm hearing from you, is that you're also asking for where is it specifically on the site plan? Is that true?
At the top.
Like where, where would it be? Like, let's say, just as an example.
Yeah.
If we say the board agrees yes to Fifth, let's just say, as an example, we would have to also say where? Is that what you're asking for? Because that's what I heard.
Not, not this evening. So the, the answer for this evening, all I'm asking is the board to review this new language in the redevelopment plan and share your findings on master plan consistency and any comments you have about, about these two or actually three new sentences that are being added to the plan. When the, presuming the redeveloper proceeds with site plan, at that time, I think that's when the board will be essentially asked those questions, although instead of being asked in the abstract without a site plan in front of you, you'll have the site plan in front of you and you'll have the ability to say to the applicant, for example, we think your, your Fourth Avenue access should be shifted in this direction or the other by X feet.
So this evening, you are not asking us where, you're just asking us if?
Correct. Yeah, this is, yeah, it's just simply, this is a traditional master plan consistency meeting, essentially, that you have an amended amendment to a land use ordinance here, an amendment to a redevelopment plan, and the board is simply being asked to weigh in on, is this consistent or inconsistent with the master plan? And do you have any comments about the, about the amendment itself? And that's it. But those questions about the site plan and the details about the access, those are going to be for Fourth and Fifth Avenue, those will certainly be within the board's jurisdiction, it's just at the typical point in time, which is the site plan application.
It's my interpretation that this just gives us more power at site plan time, right?
Absolutely.
Because before, it was the concept plan is what it is, if it's site plan time, we don't like it, too bad, it's in redevelopment time.
That's essentially it.
Now, if we get to site plan time and we say, actually, your headlights are going to be in someone's living room, let's move that driveway, or actually, we don't want cars going out of Fifth Avenue, we want them coming in, so we can, gives us a little more power. That was my interpretation.
That's correct.
Right, and.
It gives you discretion, that's what it changes.
Yes, it gives you discretion as the location on Fourth Avenue, and if, and then the details about the Fifth Avenue access.
But at the same time, and you guys, I guess Jack would be able to tell us here, or Beth here, at the same time, just because we're saying, yes, we'd like the option of Fifth, that doesn't necessarily mean that the council will give us that.
Well, they could.
Because this is going back to the council.
Yeah, they, they could, they could decline to adopt the amendment.
Right.
That's, that's certainly possible.
Okay.
But if they, if they adopt the amendment, the planning board will have this additional discretion.
Okay.
If they do not adopt the amendment, then the original redevelopment plan, the original being the one that was adopted in June of this year, will remain in place.
Okay.
I have a quick question. I had, I think also misunderstood part of the process, because I had thought that, like, a full vehicle, a full traffic study was going to be done considering, I know that there was a traffic count and that the developer had a study, a traffic count done, but I, and I know that it says now in the amended change, vehicle access from Memorial Drive shall not be permitted, and that was added.
Mm-hmm.
So that was another new language. I thought that was going to be discussion after a full vehicle, like a full traffic study.
No, the purpose of the amendment is just simply to grant additional planning board discretion to the Fourth Avenue access and to any Fifth Avenue access that you might deem appropriate.
But it has that added line about Memorial Drive shall not be permitted, so that would be, that was new, right?
It's, I would say it's clarification. Memorial access was not permitted under the original, in the existing redevelopment plan. And so, yes, that is clearly stated in here, but I didn't highlight it because it's not a change from what's already been adopted. The only change is.
I'm looking at the wrong thing. I'm looking at the mini pack, like at the bottom where it says Section 1, additions are shown as underlined, deletions are shown as cross.
Right.
Is that where it should be?
Yes.
And I say, if this is, maybe this is sourced.
Oh, you mean highlighted by you, but not, it's highlighted there. It's highlighted in the language, but you're saying you didn't highlight it in your.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't highlight it in my words.
I understand, but it is highlight, I mean, it is an addition.
Yes, it is literally highlighted in the, in the report as new language, I'm sorry, that was confusing.
So without this amendment, what I can't, when presented a site plan, you wouldn't have discretion about where the access would go?
That's correct. Under the existing redevelopment plan, if this were not to be adopted, and there's no further changes, under the existing redevelopment plan, the developer would be obligated to present a site plan that was consistent with the redevelopment plan, which only showed access on Fourth Avenue. And the planning board would not have the ability to require alternative locations for access on Fifth or to otherwise shift the Fourth Avenue access along that frontage.
And that's because part of this redevelopment plan is to build according to that.
Correct. Because the, the adopted redevelopment plan requires consistency with the concept plans included at the back of the plan, and so this language has been added to essentially allow for deviation from that concept plan through granting the planning board additional discretion.
I mean, it certainly, it certainly sounds like it would give us a bit more leeway.
Absolutely.
Whether we would want to take it or not is a question.
Sure.
But it would, by allowing this, that it would give us that, that flexibility. I don't know if any, anybody, any other planning board member has any questions?
So we did receive this traffic study, we asked the city for a traffic study, they got it. I've received one of my email this morning. Is this, is this evidence we should be considering or discussing?
I would say that was, that traffic study was done specifically for the council's consideration of the adopted, the adopted redevelopment plan and was not done specific for this.
Okay, thanks.
And I wanted everyone to have it because everybody else in the public has had it, and if everybody else in the public has it, there's no reason why you.
Does anybody else on the board have any other questions of the witness? Okay, I'd like to open up the, to the public, to the questions of the witness of what was already mentioned today. Anybody from the public that would like to question the witness, specifically on what was said today? By the way, just so that for those of you that may or may not have had, been here before, you also have the ability to, after we're, we're finished with the questions, we will also open it up for comments from the public, where you have three minutes to say what you wish about what was brought up here today. So you have this question of the, of the witness, and then later on, you can say, you can, you can speak for three minutes about the subject. That's a separate piece that we're going to do. Normal, normal procedure, just in case you haven't been here before. Go ahead.
Name and address, please.
Nancy Sabino, 1004th Avenue.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask the witness if she knows why this amendment was made by the council?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So the amendment was made as a result of concerns expressed during the public hearing process, and that really started at the planning board, and in fact, there's, I would say, brief reference to it in the whereas clauses on the first and second page of the amendment itself, but in there, it references that findings of the access evaluation that was done, as well as reflects the fact that residents proximate to the site have expressed traffic and safety concerns regarding the vehicle access.
And is there any reason you know of why these concerns by the public weren't concerns initially with this redevelopment plan?
When, when the redevelopment plan, or the redevelopment concept or idea had originally been presented by the developer during a council meeting in, I want to say late 2023, I'm sorry, I don't have that date off the top of my head, there were not significant traffic concerns and access concerns that the council felt it, it wanted to alter the anticipated concept plan.
And that wouldn't be something that would come from your organization, your company, to address potential issues with a plan like this?
Well, it's, yes, generally, as the author to the plan, yes, I think it would be my responsibility to make those changes. Sorry, it's so awkward, I just, I think it would be my responsibility to make those changes, but in terms of generating public response, that's something that would occur at the council meeting, again, at the, here, at these types of meetings of the planning board, and then again, at the council meeting during the public hearing. So council public input meeting, the planning board review, and then the public hearing that also occurs at the council.
Thank you.
Hi, Mike Sedano, 1004th. You said that a traffic study was done, was it a traffic count or a traffic impact report?
I would say the traffic report, let me see how Mr. Dean titled it, but it did provide count, traffic counts, and it also provided an evaluation of the access. He doesn't refer to it as a traffic impact study, refers to it as an access evaluation, but I will note in the appendix or the attachments to the report, he does cite traffic volumes.
So, so is, is there any report on the impact of this development will have on the neighborhoods of Fourth, Fifth, Langford, Third, Comstock, et cetera, by adding additional, minimally 130 cars plus?
The traffic study goes through, it's not a full traffic impact statement. Instead, it focused largely on how the proposed, the then proposed redevelopment, how that compared to the existing zoning for the property to provide that comparison. It also provided more detail on what I think was the primary intention of the report, which was to identify what frontages of this property presented the safest options for vehicle access.
Okay, but there's no real impact study done on what a dense development like this is going to have on a neighborhood of mostly single-family houses. Comparing it to what was there, which was a crack den and a warehouse that wasn't used is kind of.
No, I'm sorry, if I mention, if I just simply cited the existing use, which I may have, the comparison was actually to the underlying zoning rather than the defunct former building on the property. So the comparison was what could be constructed on the site under existing zoning versus the proposed redevelopment.
So what is the capacity, what is the, what is the capacity of the, of the underlying zoning? In other words, what does the underlying zoning say that the density should be?
Well, the underlying zoning is an industrial use, industrial zoning, or excuse me, B-zone rather than a residential district. So for example, it cites, just, let's see, it cites, if we look at the highest volume of traffic for this property, which is 60, which is Saturday, and it cites 64 cars during.
I know, but that's, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's also, that's just count. I mean, that's not, that's not.
I'm sorry, what did you mean by capacity, then?
Well, I'm sorry, capacity wasn't the right word. Density, I guess, is the word I'm looking for. And I don't know if I can ask questions about density under this, under these specificities, or if they have to be dealt with in my comment section, but it sounds, it sounds like a traffic impact study was not done on what the impact of the neighborhood will, how the impact of the neighborhood will be affected by 130 units in this development.
So that type of a report, for example, would typically include intersection analyses and, correct, that, this report does not include that, but a couple of things. So, one, correct, this report does not include that type of analysis. However, that, that type of analysis in a traffic impact report, a traffic impact assessment, I'm not sure, I forget how this planning board refers to it, but that is a required document for major site plan applications here. And so that information. And so that information will be presumably required by the board when, when a site plan application for this site is, is conducted. The board will have the opportunity to review the impacts at that time, and to the extent that there are offset, off-site impacts, just like any other application in this city and around the state, developers are obligated to provide for their pro-rata share of any improvements that might be necessary in order to ensure the, the safety of the area.
Right. And remember that what we're here for today is to ensure that, that if the board agrees, that there should be or could be possibly a Fifth Avenue egress as well. That's what we're here for. So though I do understand that when, when they do come back and actually are, you know, with their site plans and something like what you're saying, should probably be included in that, and the board should be asking for that.
Right. It just, it just sounds like you're putting the cart before the horse. I mean, you're, you're approving a 130 unit...
No, we're not.
No, we're not.
We're not approving...
Well, okay, but 130-unit development is on the table, and then you look at the traffic impact, as opposed to saying, hey, you know, this is 130-unit development, maybe that's a little too much for this area. Maybe we should go back and say to the developer, you know, we don't think 130 units is right for this single-family neighborhood because common sense tells us there's going to be a lot of cars coming into this development. So to me, if that's your process, it's a little backwards.
And that, that's more on the comment level, and we'll accept that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, Kitty Minervini, 1012 Fifth Avenue. Elizabeth, did you, I think you said you took into consideration what the city councils, we, the public made, spoke up to the city council about some of these parking issues and also, or traffic issues, and also the entrances on Fourth, Fifth, and possibly Memorial. So my question to you is, did you read any of the comments from the letters that the residents, I think we had probably 100, approximately 100 people in the neighborhood, some of them are here tonight, that signed? Did you read any of those, anything from the public, or do you, does your team just...
Just a second, just a second. None of that was discussed today. Beth has presented to us, asking us about Fourth and Fifth Avenue.
I understand that.
That's all. She, she's not, has not testified to anything else than that. Unless you feel differently and you want to go down that, that road, I don't think that that's the road...
She made a comment, I'm just asking a question.
Go ahead.
She made a comment about city council input into this entrance and egress from this building. I'm just asking if she also looked at what her team and her company also looked at, what the public said. Because we did issue, we did issue letters to the city council. So I don't know if you're just looking at AP-TV, if you're reading meeting minutes, or you're actually looking at letters that the public sent. That's just my question.
Right.
It has to do with exactly this, because all of the residents asked for the possibility of Memorial, and it just kept getting sidebarred constantly. And I'm asking Elizabeth, if she had the opportunity to look at what the actual public had to say about this? And is there the ones parking the cars, driving, riding our bikes, riding our scooters, and walking around that area? That's my question. If you didn't read it, then the answer is no.
So I haven't seen the letters that you're referring to. I did, of course, attend all of the council meetings and the planning board meetings where this was discussed, and people provided comments and questions.
Okay. And the other question I have is, I don't understand why Memorial is off the table when this body, governing body right here, should know more than the city council about this situation. I don't understand why it's still off the table. Do you, can you tell me why it's off the table and why we're still talking about Fourth, and now we're talking about Fifth?
Because of the directive from the mayor and council to the board.
But this governing body...
No, they do not. We are not a governing body.
Well, whatever you are, representatives of...
We do not have the power to do that.
Representatives of our community.
I'm not going to argue with you.
Okay. I'm just asking why...
I'm not going to argue.
You don't have to roll your eyes at me, Jack.
Okay. Look, I'm not going to argue with you, okay? I know what you're looking for. I get it. I understand what you're saying. Go ahead.
Okay, so that question will be answered. Thanks.
Hi, friends. Eric Galoppo, 908 Fifth Avenue. So Beth, in your testimony, you said this change was made in response about, quote, "concerns about the location of the Fourth Avenue access," that was in your testimony. So I'd like to ask, what concerns were those and who expressed them?
There were, I don't have the, the list of residents that spoke either at the planning board or at the council meeting, but there were multiple residents that expressed concern about access being required only on Fourth Avenue, and there were requests for additional access points, yes, including Memorial, but also to potentially Fifth Avenue.
So would you characterize the majority of residents preferred Memorial Drive over Fourth or Fifth?
I don't know.
That spoke at those meetings. Sorry, I just wanted to clarify.
You know what? I really don't know. I don't have a count. I didn't, I didn't review that level of detail for this meeting. There may have been a majority, but I really don't recall.
So you were not provided either of the sign-on letters that included over 150 residents expressing the preference for Memorial Drive?
I have not seen those letters.
That's surprising. So with regard to the traffic count and access analysis that was performed by the developer's consultant, does that traffic count estimate new traffic generated by this site?
Just, just one thing, can I, if you like, Beth? This, Beth was, Beth did not create this.
I'm aware.
We're just, we're just here. So I'm, I don't know how much she knows or doesn't know...
That's okay.
...that what's here, and she really didn't speak to it that much. So, so I'm fine, you know, if you know the answer, fine. If you don't know the answer, you know, we, when the site plan comes back, we could have Dolan and Dean come and talk about it. It's up to you.
I, so I don't think I'm qualified to provide interpretations of this.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. I mean, I can cite what is written in here, but...
Nobody's asking you to interpret.
But I'm certainly, don't have expertise in traffic engineering. I, I don't think I'm a good choice for interpreting Mr. Dean's findings beyond citing his conclusions.
Nobody's asking you to interpret findings. We're asking you to just say whether or not they exist. So does it estimate new traffic that would be generated by the site?
Yes.
It estimates new traffic generated by 130-unit development in that report?
Yes. It estimates the number of trips. That is...
For a 130-unit development?
Yes.
Okay. Does it include any network analysis of the impact and likely turning motions of vehicles leaving or entering the site from different configurations or entry points?
No, I think it cited to, I believe it was Mr. Sedano's question, this does not include intersection analyses.
And Beth, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, I'm just trying to make sure that everybody's clear about what is and is not included in this site, in this study. Does this study, this traffic count, analyze the impact based on different design options?
Mr. Dean provides an evaluation of the three frontage options for the property and makes recommendations as to what he believes is the most safe and, about the relative safety about, of each option.
And did that analysis of his include the potential of any traffic calming measures in the street or any changes to street design?
No.
Okay. Did this traffic count estimate the likely number of new vehicles that would be required or needing to use street parking, on-street parking, because they are not able to be accommodated in the 126 available spots planned for the site?
No, and I want to, and I want to emphasize the fact that this report, one, was done for the council at the, for the June public hearing, two, it is not, it was not intended nor touted as a full traffic impact assessment. And as a result, the scope of it is limited. It is not a scope that the planning board would have for its site plan application. It is perhaps a quarter as long, just to, just to try to quantify that for folks, as you might expect for a traffic impact statement. And so the purpose of this was specific for the previously adopted redevelopment plan, and it was done for the council with a specific scope as opposed to a more typical traffic impact assessment.
I appreciate that, thank you. So would you say that the council based their decision on what is the safest option?
This is, this, that's not a good line of questioning to go down. How would Beth know?
I can't...
How would Beth surmise?
So how did the council decide that Fourth or Fifth is a safe option? And based on the impact of the new development? How was that decision made?
I can't pretend to, to understand the, the inner workings of, of any particular person or, or this city's council. There was a public hearing during which discussion ensued, multiple meetings during which discussion about this topic was had, and I think that's all I, all I, all I can speak to, quite honestly.
So you did mention the B zoning, I just want to go back to that. So the B zoning allows for a density of...
Forty.
Forty units per acre. This parcel will be developed at?
Significantly more than double.
130 units, correct?
Yes.
1.5 acres, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's 90 units per acre.
Where, where are we going? Where are we going, Eric?
I'm getting there, I'm getting there. Okay. So...
I just want to emphasize the scope of this plan amendment is, should the planning board have discretion about where the access is on Fourth Avenue, and should the planning board have discretion about whether there's access on Fifth Avenue?
Exactly. That's all we're here for.
It is very straightforward.
That's what we're here for.
Time out, time out, time out.
So this same amendment also prohibits access on Memorial Drive without an adequate, does this, does this, I'm sorry, I have to ask it as a question. Does this amendment prohibit the act, the use of Memorial Drive for site access?
Yes, but I think it should be noted that that is not a change from the existing and adopted redevelopment plan.
However, the concerns that the, are you aware that the, the public expressed great concern about the use of either Fourth or Fifth as egress?
Yes.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Good evening. John Scully, 1307 Fourth Avenue. I believe you said earlier that your capacity is the planner for the redevelopment for the council. In that capacity, did you provide any expertise opinion to the council with regards to an entrance or exit on Memorial?
Uh, yes.
And what was that opinion?
That is not anything that...
I can provide, I mean, I certainly have the answer, but I...
But she testified earlier...
I'm eager to allow the planning board to have the scope of this meeting be tailored to the report. If the board does not wish that, I'm happy to answer any question the board would like. But my intention this evening was to present the amendment to address the additional discretion that might be granted if this amendment is adopted, as opposed to relitigating the underlying redevelopment plan.
Right. Because the redevelopment plan has already been approved, and this is an amendment to that. We just have to decide whether or not we agree as a board to this amendment. We will not be re, reopening up the redevelopment plan to have that discussion again as to what that was. That happened already. Now, what happened after that is this now. And in between, there was discussions with the city council. This is where we are now. The city council has brought us here. So here we are.
I understand that, but her test, so, so my ability to question her on her testimony tonight. Her testimony tonight, earlier, she stated that she is the board or the planner for the redevelopment authority...
That's correct.
...of the council.
That's correct.
So, so I can ask her questions with regards to her capacity in that, since she stated that in her testimony?
Actually, not, not. I, I'd leave that to Jack, because...
Very limited.
Which I believe my question was very limited.
Very limited to this, but we're not going to reopen that, the redevelopment plan in so far as the ingress and egress on 1201.
No, and I'm not trying to, Jack, I'm, I'm just simply trying to find out who, if it was her, in her capacity, as she said, as the planner for the council redevelopment plan, was she the individual that gave the board professional expertise opinion not to consider Memorial?
You mean the mayor and council?
Correct, yeah, mayor and council. Which she just stated, yes, and then I asked her...
Amongst others, there are, I believe there are other entities that were involved in the...
But she didn't test, she didn't say that. She just said, yes. I did, I did give expertise, an expertise opinion.
No, I get it.
So, so my follow-up question to her, her answer then is, why did you give that expertise opinion that Memorial should not be considered? A very limited scope. I'm not looking to open up all the other things. I, I...
All right. If she answers this question, if the follow-up is to go deeper, well, stop it.
Depends on what she said.
No, no, no.
But I'm not...
We're not going to reopen this.
I'm, I'm, Jack, I'm not looking at that, I'm just looking for a...
I, no, you're a good attorney, you're doing the right thing, you're, she cracked it open, you're going to take that advantage and you're going to go down there. I understand, but we're not going to go there.
That's fine.
We're not going to, we're not going to go back into, to all of that. That's, that, that was for the mayor and council to consider when they adopted this plan.
Yeah. No, look, if she wants to answer that, I, I will leave that line of questioning if she, if she answers my follow-up question.
Okay.
Of why she gave, why she gave her expert opinion to the board, to the council, sorry.
No, to the council.
Not to consider Memorial.
Perhaps I'm a gotten for punishment, but generally speaking, the answer is, I had expressed some general planning concerns, and I'd also expressed what I had anticipated to be traffic engineering concerns, which are then confirmed by Mr. Dean's report.
Okay. I, I will just say this, Jack. My question is very pointed, and your answer was generally speaking. I was looking for a more pointed question or more pointed answer, but...
That's her answer.
You also confirmed for me that you just, you testified earlier that you're not a traffic expert. Is that correct? You testified a few minutes ago about that?
Yes.
Okay. You stated, you testified earlier that at the time the site plan application will be heard by this board, this board will have the authority to consider other streets. Will they have the authority to consider Memorial?
No.
Can you answer why that is?
The redevelopment plan is unchanged from that perspective in that access to Memorial is not permitted. And the redevelopment plan requires consistency with the concept plan, except in ways that are specifically articulated in the plan, and that is not one of them.
And that was based on your expert opinion to the council not to consider Memorial?
Hmm.
It's a very, it's a very limited question.
No, no.
It's a very narrow question.
Did you listen to the question before you answered?
This is, Beth is not on trial. I'm sorry, but Beth is not on trial here, sir.
I am not, I am not a trial attorney.
It doesn't matter if you're a trial attorney or not, she is not on trial.
I, I am here as an attorney, I'm here as a resident.
Exactly.
These are questions for the council meeting.
They're listed as...
Point of order, just...
Sure. Go ahead.
I apologize to the audience, I'm doing this on the board. This strikes me as a discussion with the council, not for, not this body. So if I'm looking at Jack, could explain maybe the process?
I agree.
Of this, all right. And then, I'm just trying to figure out, like, I understand what you're trying to do, what you're trying to accomplish. I don't think this is the venue for it. Like, my understanding, even in advance of Jack, is what is being discussed on the table with, with, by the audience, is that this is an argument for... with the people in front of the audience, is that this in large favor, have the planning board can make, do anything?
No.
We, we can't make those decisions.
Right, so then I don't understand the discussion happening here.
Well, yeah, I'll, I'll explain it, your, your witness testified tonight, so therefore, as a resident, I can question, I can question her, I can question her testimony. But that, that's, that's, that's why this is, whether you like it because it's in the setting of a planning board, it, it's, it's much narrower than that. You, the planning board has a witness in front of them, she provided testimony, she held herself out as an expert witness, I can therefore, in this venue, I'm not saying that there's other venues that I can do this in, there may be, but in this venue she testified, I can therefore question her on her testimony. And my questions are very limited to her testimony tonight.
But also, can, can I also say that, that no matter what Beth's answers are, we still have only one thing here to answer. That's it. Whatever you're asking does not impact this, a lot of the questions that are being stated have, others have.
I'm not saying.
This one in particular does not, so, so you're pretty much, we're sitting here just listening to what you have to say. And how is that productive to us as volunteers here, sitting here just listening to things we cannot react to?
Tell you more power.
It's out of our power.
I'm not asking you to react, I'm asking your expert witness to, to respond, I'm not asking you to react. And, and.
And so we're sitting here, how much longer are we going to sit listening to you question her?
I'm offended that you're sitting up there saying you're a volunteer and I'm wasting your time, when all of these residents are sitting here.
Yes, because we cannot do anything based on what questions you are asking.
Are you willing to answer the question or not, and I will sit down.
You've said that many times, and you keep asking another question.
I said to Jack, I would not follow up in that line of questions, this is a different question, nobody's listening. Is your witness going to answer the question or not?
At this point, I need the, I don't recall the question. Could you repeat it if you'd like me to?
Sure, so you said that at the, sorry, you testified earlier, as an expert witness, today, in this venue, that at the time of the site plan application, this board would have the authority to discuss and study the impact on other streets. And my question was, does that include Memorial? And you said, no. And then my follow-up question was, why, why is that? Was that because, based on your expert testimony to the council, not to consider Memorial?
The reason why the board cannot consider Memorial is because the redevelopment plan does not permit it. The redevelopment plan requires consistency with the concept plan that is included in the redevelopment plan towards the back. That consistency includes, but is not limited to curb cut locations unless otherwise provided for in the redevelopment plan. This specific amendment, if adopted, would allow the planning board to also consider access to Fifth Avenue as well as shifting location of Fourth Avenue. Memorial Drive access is, and whether it is permitted or not, of course it is not, is unchanged from the original redevelopment plan.
Thank you for your answer. And thank you for everybody's time, the volunteers up on the board, and thank you for all my residents that are here, all of our other residents.
Any other questions from the public? Any other, any comments that we would like to have from, I'd like to actually open up comment.
Yeah.
Sorry?
Here what the public has to say.
Yeah, comment, I'd like to open up, make a, make a motion to open up comment for the public, you'll have three minutes, come on up to, to the.
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes aye. Okay, Catholic, please raise your right hand. Usam swear affirming testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your address once again.
Kitty Minervini, ten twelve Fifth Avenue. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to all of you for your commitment to the city, to our, our, our community. I have also sat on the zoning board, so I understand it's a time commitment. The fact that you all sit there with your arms crossed, rolling your eyes and giving us a hard time, you have to understand, a lot of us showed up at a lot of meetings, and we had a city council that didn't listen to us. We're kind of desperate, so we're looking at you to hear us out. I'm sorry you're all annoyed, you represent our community, you represent me, you represent people here, and you represent people that are not here. It's really insulting for you guys to be annoyed with us. We're, we're damned if we do and we're damned if we don't. We show up and we get this attitude, we don't show up and things happen without us knowing and, and understanding. We're trying to understand, we're trying to share it with our neighbors. Find it really insulting. We have gone to a lot of, a lot of painstakingly getting neighbors together, writing letters, nobody listened to us. If I showed up at the city council to develop that piece of property, I probably couldn't do more than sixty units. This developer swoops into town, and he's doing, first was one oh eight, and then city council asked for low income housing. Instead of taking the twenty percent out of the one oh eight, he added it on to the one oh eight, and that's why today we're at a hundred and thirty units. Think about that. I don't know where you all live, but you would feel exactly how we feel. Trust me, you would. That's all I have to say, thanks.
Please raise your right hand. Usam swear affirming testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your address.
Eric Galipo, G A L I P as in Peter, O. My address is nine oh eight Fifth Avenue.
Thank you.
Hi, board, first of all, I just want to say I love you all, even those I don't agree with in most cases. And Beth, I hope you don't feel as though we're putting you on trial, as Kitty said, there is a lot of frustration particularly about this plan. What I would say is that the job of the planning board tonight is to determine whether or not an entrance on Fourth and or Fifth is consistent with the master plan, and whether or not this amendment is consistent with the master plan. The master plan provides many, many directives to say that developments and redevelopments should provide appropriate transition and should manage the impact of redevelopment on the surrounding neighborhoods and blend in with its surroundings. We have repeatedly expressed that putting all vehicular access on the side streets will disproportionately affect existing residents when there is an option to have an exit and entrance only on Memorial. Not only that, this plan does not consider any impacts that will, we will feel either in parking, in safety, in traffic, or, you know, just generally living there. With only a hundred and twenty-six spots and a hundred and thirty units, it is very likely, and commercial space, it is very likely that there will be more than a hundred cars just searching for parking. And there is no increase in parking supply, no increase in any sort of safety measures, nothing within the plan. And so I would say that having an entrance on Fourth or Fifth is inconsistent with the master plan. And we would ask you to make your recommendation back to the council to say, look, sure, it would be great if we had a little discretion on where the entrance was, but we would like that discretion to include Memorial. It's just that simple. In fact, at the city council meeting where this resolution was allowed to include Fifth Avenue, it was not on the agenda, it was passed at the last minute without any knowledge of residents. And then, if, if the council can just wave its hand and say, we'll make one on Fourth and Fifth without a traffic impact study, why not wave the wand and make it a win-win for everybody? We could have a beautiful development with a hundred and thirty new residents, with traffic minimized on, the traffic impacts minimized on all of us. And we're asking you to make a recommendation back to the city council and say, you know, sure, we would like this discretion, we would also like the discretion to look at an option that considers Memorial. It's that simple.
Please raise your right hand. Usam swear affirm, testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and once again, give us your address.
Nancy Sabino, one thousand Fourth Avenue, N A N C Y S A B like a boy, I N O.
Thank you.
Eric took a lot of the wind from my sails, but one of the reasons we are, you are considering Fifth Avenue is because so many people came up at the council meeting and had issues with only on Fourth, only on Fourth, which was considered the safest, and with the study that was done reaffirmed as the only way. And then boom, we got Fourth and Fifth as a possibility, which seemed at the moment to be a small consideration after all of the choices we had offered at the council meeting. So I appreciate you having this discretion put in front of you, and you having more power to do something about it on our behalf, because so many of us have looked at this as, we really want this building. There's nobody in the neighborhood who wants an empty lot. But the thought of how it could be done, and with all the suggestions of experts in the field who are living in the neighborhoods, we had hoped to give some fodder to the council to say, hey, this could be done a better way, and there's lots of ideas. I was even thinking of some ordinances even today of, you know, getting people to get their cars off the streets more, because there's so many people with garages and driveways who don't use them, let alone the people who don't have garages and driveways. Or get them all off the streets between two and five at night, the way they do in other towns, to alleviate the fact that people just leave cars. But there are options, and this is not the first time this situation has come up in a city. And cities are becoming very innovative about how they attack these kinds of problems, and there are best practices out there that we should consider before just going with what seems to be the only game in town. So we're all here, and there's a lot more of us, some were more eloquent than others, nobody was antagonistic or yelling or screaming about their thoughts, there were people even begging from the audience not to have this happen. So it's in keeping with what we're trying to do here to give you our thoughts and our concerns, and appreciate your time and effort in looking at this the way we've been looking at it for weeks now. Thank you.
Usam swear affirm, testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your address.
John Scully, S C U L O Y, thirteen oh seven, Fourth Avenue.
Thank you.
I urge the board to listen to the sentiments of my fellow residents and think about the impact that one or two entrances on Fourth and Fifth will have on the surrounding cities, or surrounding state streets. Based on the action that this board took earlier on a location on Langford, you said that you wanted an impact study, and members on this board said, how, how can we move forward without an impact study? But yet, everybody seems okay moving forward with the impact study here. I would hope that this board, as volunteers that have only been here for an hour, feel the respect that the citizens have for the board, and give the same respect back to the citizens. Thank you for your time tonight.
Usam swear affirm, the testimony about giving this matter the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please state your name for the record, spell it, and give us your address again, please.
Mike Sedano, S O D A N O, one thousand Fourth Avenue.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much, Planning Board, for considering this amendment. Beth, we have nothing against you at all, so just want to put that on the record as well. I just want you to realize that the reason we're even here tonight considering an addition on Fifth is because a resident came up with the idea and posed it to a member of the city council. When the city council was adamant about not having an entrance or egress on Memorial due to traffic conditions, okay, we get it, okay? Memorial, yeah, it, it's really busy, okay? If you live on Fourth, you'll realize that Fourth is also a superhighway, and Fifth is becoming a superhighway. So when a resident proposed the idea of adding an entrance and egress on Fifth, it only seemed natural, it only seemed like a common sense kind of idea, because we're limited, you can't, you can't, Memorial is off the table. So it really goes back to density. I don't understand this process where you approve a development of a hundred and thirty units, and then start considering traffic impact studies and site plans, and say, yeah, a hundred and thirty units, that's, that's just great for that neighborhood. I, I don't know where, why somebody doesn't scratch their head and go, wait a minute, a hundred and thirty units? That's, that's crazy. You're, you're talking about the development on Langford that only has something like eighty units. So where's the, where's the consistency here? Where's the, where's the bottom, where's the barometer that says what is right and wrong for density in the, in the neighborhood? Because I think everything just goes back to the issue of density. And we wouldn't be, we wouldn't even be here if the density was apropos to the land. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? All right, motion to close public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Ayes aye.
Anyone from the planning board have any comments that they'd like to make? Any follow-ups, any, any suggestions, any?
What Eric said about making the recommendation, consider Memorial, is Memorial a bit of a show-off?
Also, for everyone's edification, you already looked at this twice, this project, November of twenty-three and April of twenty-four. In both resolutions that were forwarded back to council, this board requested the power to be permitted to decide where the ingress and egress would be for this project. Twice already, it was done. Wasn't, wasn't ignored, honestly, it's there, I can give you the resolution, it's written there, I drafted it, it's right in there, so. You have made those requests twice in the past, so that you would have the ability to decide where ingress and egress for the project would come from.
I just want to say, we did request that power, we requested the traffic study.
Yes.
There, we have one, page six of the traffic study, taking into account vehicular traffic, bicycles and pedestrian, says it is therefore recommended to prohibit future site access onto Memorial Drive. So I'm thinking, what recommendations do we make back to the council? We do, we do, like, this, when we stood on First Avenue, we made a lot of recommendations. Do I want to recommend to the council, consider Memorial Drive, when the data I have, I have, I have data from the public who want Memorial Drive, that's one side, I have data from this traffic study that says we should prohibit access onto Memorial Drive? Makes, it makes it difficult.
But this memo is from the developers. Meaning, like, in the terms of the timing, this was for city council, not for us.
Yeah.
So this was, this wasn't part of our evaluation.
But there's also objective data in here about the number of vehicles, the number of traffic crossings, pedestrian crossings, bike crossings. Maybe for the developer.
Please don't speak out.
Well, I'm just, I don't, I'm not talking about the developer, anything about the developer in a negative way, I'm saying, this was not part of what we evaluated when we met on this project, so therefore.
I, I'm just thinking, we're saying, we're saying like you to do, can't just keep kicking things back and forth between us and the council and saying, they're not listening, they're not listening. We could make a recommendation to the council, right, if we really thought it was appropriate, but we have to consider anything, including this report.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
One on the board.
Just, all in the board, since the previous time this resolution that was passed by this body of the council, we asked for discretion over additional sites for egress. We specified Memorial Drive as a site when we raised that request--
I can't recall that, but it was clear that the board was asking for the power to decide where ingress and egress should be. And that was subsequent to discussions regarding both Memorial and Fourth at the time, Fifth was not raised at that time. But there was extensive discussion about both, both streets.
What the council have done is said, here's a proposal, I would give you discretion for Fourth and Fifth. And the council have decided not to give us discretion to consider--
That is correct.
And just wanted to share--
Yeah, the underlying redevelopment plan, we're here to make recommendations, they're non-binding.
Sure.
We're just doing it in advisory capacity, and the council decided to do, to draft the current resolution.
Right, so this goes to your point that we specifically asked for this and specifically have been not granted that by the council?
No, we asked, just like we did for First Avenue, where we asked for a traffic study, we didn't recommend any specific site, we just said, let's look at all of the sides. We recommended that to council. I want to give the council credit here, they did, did we have a study, it may not be a perfect study, but it looks at it and it specifically says Fourth and Fifth are better, don't use Memorial. And so what did the city council come back to us with? They came back to us with, consider Fourth or Fifth, we have the power for Fourth or Fifth. To me, that's pretty fair.
Jack, if we, if this was voted down as an amendment, then whatever was approved before would stand.
Yes.
Right, only Fourth would stand.
We don't vote, we don't vote it down.
I understand--
Okay, I just want to make sure we understand each other.
We recommend to the council that we're not approving this amendment.
Right, okay.
Well, we're saying this is consistent with the plan. So if we vote, if we vote tonight that it's not consistent, then it's whatever was, we voted was consistent before. So my point being is, if this did not pass tonight here, then we would not have discretion, and would only be access on Fourth Avenue.
Correct. Yeah, the existing ordinance is standard, we have to enforce it.
I think that one of the things that I know that is, is also, I think that, that number of you that have been here in the past, know that after every meeting, I always thank you for coming because we appreciate public input. There are times when we can't do anything about that public input. I'll agree with that, because the law tells us we can't. Now, something is brought in front of us that has to do with our ability to have access on Fourth and Fifth, that's what's being asked for, for flexibility in the future. There's nothing within what's being asked of us legally to open up another, another area, because we have two choices, we can approve it or we can not. And as Jack said, if we don't approve it, we're back to Fourth Avenue without any leverage as to where or what, where the driveways are. If we approve this, we have ability to potentially, maybe, have Fifth also, maybe it could be a two-way, maybe it'll be a one-way, maybe Fourth will be a two-way or a one-way, I don't know. We'll have to see when the site plan comes. But unfortunately, what happens a lot of times, and I think that this happens with the council also, it happens with us, is that we have to abide by the law, and that's what we have to abide by, and that's hard for the public. I know that some of you that are here that have been on zoning boards, understand you have to abide by the law. And that's where we are, in my opinion. So I, I, I hear you, I understand that the process is not perfect, and I'm a process kind of person, so you know that when you tell me that a process is no good, that's a problem. But it is, we are here where we are. And I am going to make the request, though not a popular one, I'm going to request to give the, the, the planning board the most flexibility that we can possibly have in this site plan when it comes back, to approve the Fifth, the potential of a Fifth Avenue entrance or exit. I'm going to request that that's what we vote on. If anybody else would like to vote on, put out something else, I'm fine with that. I'm just one vote.
Okay, and going along with that, to go with the strict statute, consistency with master plan?
Yes, with consistency with the master plan, because we already determined it was consistent with the master plan in our two prior votes.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor, anyone want to discuss it or have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question, actually. There's no process, because once the, my understanding is once this, if this becomes the redevelopment plan, all is codified, then the developer has no opportunity to make any changes later. It is what it is. If the developer wanted to do something that's outside of those bounds, there's no--
They would, the developer would have to either seek a variance, or, and mostly with redevelopment plan, they actually have to seek an amendment to the redevelopment plan. The board has the power, I believe, to grant some bulk variances, not, no use variances, nothing like that, density is a use. So, yeah, if the developer did not want to adhere to the plan as it's codified under the ordinances, he or she would have to go back to the mayor and council to seek an amendment, because they're the redevelopment agency.
I just want to understand the process.
Yeah.
Am I even eligible to vote on this resolution since I would not remember the board, you can hear this line, of this complication with this cycle?
Yeah, because you, this is limited just to this. We're not voting on anything that took place previously. And you, you're prepared for this, it's been vetted. Any other discussions? Roll call.
James Gonado?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Jeremy Hocken?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
That's state.
Daniel Shinameo?
Yes.
Jen Sauter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Guden?
Yes.
Chairwoman Kerza?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, can I get a motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.